Good evening.
Good evening.
You're live? Is there a log in there on the back of your head and table?
Sir.
Is there a log?
I need your hair.
That's on our YouTube, the official website. They just pop on the right?
Yeah, it's live on our website.
Abbotstownborough.com?
Yep.
Are you going to? It was coming.
Years ago, I came when, um, yeah.
Yeah, you came.
Never mind that. No, 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 no. Years ago. Right, the ring is only buried in the living room. In the tower, the lady.
Okay. Yep. Call the governor, start with the flag. The legislature is to the flag of the United States of America. And to their public, which stands one nation, another God, indivisible, the liberty and justice of all. All right. Roll call. Laura's here, Hannah's here, I'm here. Austin's here. Mayor's here. Assistant Chief. Dave. All right, and. We need to approve for April to call in. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Hello?
Yes.
Hi, you have been voted to participate by telecommunication. Thank you. All right, public comment. Approval of the minutes. Motion by Laura. Second by April. Any discussion?
Yeah, my name.
What? Where? That's sorry. We were teaching a new person to do it today. As amended. All right. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. President reports.
Thank you. Um, so, I am happy to report that the borough is currently in the best financial situation it has ever been. And I say that knowing the history of this borough. Current investments alone. Currently, total four hundred sixty-one thousand, three hundred fifty-five dollars, seventy-eight cents. From that money, we generate more than twelve hundred dollars a month in interest. Uh, which is far more than we were getting when we were letting that money sit in the bank account. So, with that, we are currently at a cash position of six hundred sixteen thousand, nine hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty-four cents. Uh, we have received our, uh, large, uh, real estate, so, um, we are at. Currently, only thirty-three percent of our expenditures for the entire year. And that puts us in a net income position of a hundred eighteen thousand, eight fifteen. And that is generated off of our revenues, which total currently two hundred forty-eight thousand, three hundred eighty-one dollars. Which is sixty-four percent of our budget. Very strong. Um, I am also proud to say that. A little background, if I may. Years ago. We had a council president who opened an account and put money into that account for a community picnic. And that's what the money was supposed to be used for. They held various fundraising events and the borough put money into that account. And that person left their office, they refused to relinquish that money. So that money sat in a bank account under their control for years. That is posing, back in twenty eighteen, filled me in on it and told me to find a way to get it. So, for years, we tried the nice way, we tried to ask, we tried to work with these people, we couldn't get the money. There were some other options we had, we looked into those options. Finally, somebody else who was involved in the situation, who had the ability to help us, went and got the money. Brought it to us. It is now in a dedicated figure account. So it'll be earning the same interest as our other investments until such time we decide to have an event. When we have that event, we simply put in an ACH transfer to bring it into our bank account to pay for those expenses. The rest of it can sit there, allocated, so that every year when your general fund rolls over, that money doesn't. It stays there, just like our investments. Until you take them out for bridges or road, things like that. So, that gave us, uh, twelve hundred eighty-five dollars towards any community events we decide to have in the park. So, um, I did let Laura know about that, and I'm sure she'll probably start taking some feedback about what type of event people are going to have. I'm sorry to interrupt you. But we got. Um, and with that, um, I believe that's the end of my question, please. All right, except for some comments about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the financial report. Motion by Laura. Second by April. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Through the round of five, paying the bills. First by Austin. Second by Laura. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to note here also that, um, with the J. Myers project, um, they just pulled that project, the, the two parcels, out of the Clean and Green Program. The Clean and Green Program basically gives you a tax discount on lands that you are dedicating to farming purposes or agriculture. So, with that being pulled, there's a certain amount of back taxes that they have to pay. Um, of course, the school gets the bulk of that because they have the highest mileage. County gets some of it, we get some of it based on our proportion, and then borough gets some. So, um, so we will be getting some funds from that, a couple thousand dollars at the most. Um, so that's not the big thing about it. Uh, the big thing about it is it's now being taxed as regular property. So going forward, we're going to see increases already even unimproved on the revenues that we're generating from that. To date, that project has generated a hundred fifty thousand dollars from the revenue.
That's mostly the part from here?
Yes, most of that is the part from, yes. Um, and with that, that's the end of my treasure.
All right. The Mr. President reports.
Thank you. Uh, first resolution I have for your consideration is an address change for East King Street apartment. So, um, if you're familiar with Gate East King Street, that's the white building that got smashed out by the camper and has been renewed. So what they did was they created two apartment buildings, uh, in the back there. Chief has been involved in the code, uh, and the zoning process there, uh, so everything checks out at this point. Um, I believe I gave you a printout there of what it looks like. So that's if, if you're looking towards the square coming from York, up the hill, and you look to your right, that's the side of the building that you see. So that's back through there. Um, they wanted addresses so they can get mailed, of course, so first responders would know where they're at. Um, so we, uh, landed on ten and twelve for each one because the next parcel is fourteen. So it makes sense. So, so what they're asking is for council to pass the resolution so that we can identify those, uh, two parts of the parcel, uh, as apartments with separate addresses. And then I send this to, um, the property owner, fire department, EMS, and Adams County Tech Services. To let them know, and then they take it to the post office to get posted. Yes, the very front one is already eight, and then the middle ten, and then the end one will be twelve. And then the next property over is fourteen.
Motion by Laura. Second by Hillary. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Um, the second item, and, and I'm not sure if it's a motion or not, so I, I put it on there. Um, I have been working with Mr. Schulz and, uh, our engineers on the matter. Uh, Smizer Concern, who we know is Affordable Pet, um, is looking to dedicate the streets in the back. They had some things they had worked through, all that's worked through now. And, um, the only other question they had was if, instead of getting a maintenance bond, if they could self-insure, uh, basically setting up an escrow account. For, basically, the, the, the amount that the bond would be for anyway. This way, they still retain their money, but they don't have to pay somebody else for the service and give them that back. Now I'm going to let Mr. Schulz explain that a little better. Because he had to explain it to me.
So, part of the process of developer dedicating the bridges to the borough is that they have to offer it for dedication and then post a maintenance bond to maintain the integrity of the new bridge for a period of eighteen months. The amount of the maintenance bond is fifteen percent of the cost of the new bridge. So typically, um, those maintenance bonds are given to the borough by way of a letter of credit from the bank. The old bond from the insurance company. Um, those cost money to the developer because they have to pay for that. Another way the developer can do this, and it's permissible under the New Scottish Planning Code, is to actually post the money. So fifteen percent, whatever that dollar figures, in a restricted escrow account with the borough. So the borough will open it in its account, subject to an escrow agreement. If there's any issue with the roadway in the eighteen-month period, then the borough can tap into those monies to, oops, if the developer isn't going to. Uh, but at the end of the eighteen months, if they reconcile, then they can return it. So there would be an escrow agreement, uh, and it's a perfectly permissible way for the borough to be protected. Um, now, let's say that. It's going to cost the borough to do the escrow agreement, so I think that's a cost for the developer to reap the first that they would pay. So. Do you want to bridge the story?
Does it self-insure, or is that what you're doing?
I, I don't know what self-insure.
That was just a term I used, I crossed it off on Mike, and put escrow after he explained it to me. But that was their term, they wanted to self-insure. Basically, use their own money to cover the, the cost.
Why would they do that then?
Because then they're not paying somebody else for a service that they may never even use. They'll get their full amount back.
And I think we have to pay an interest if we pay an interest or anything. Uh, if we, you know, there's two options, one is not to put any interest in the account. But I, I would, you know, we'd have the borough keep the interest because the borough has expenses in dealing with the account. So, that's my recommendation.
What happened if, so something happens to the road, it's going to cost another fifteen cents, twenty dollars? What if any repairs are doing, so it could be gotten out through this parcel at that point?
Well, at that point, the borough owns the road. So, part and parcel of getting it dedicated, the process of that is to have final inspections going to make sure that the, the road was constructed properly and there are no problems. Um, but, uh, New Scottish Planning Code only requires fifteen percent for eighteen months. So, I, I guess the legislature believes that's enough to protect the New Scottish. And, and in my experience, it generally is. There, there was an issue with that road, if you recall, and, um, and council made them put it, put it back where it's supposed to be, so.
And that happened?
Yes. And we have inspectors out there all the time, between, between inspectors and engineers.
So, the proposal we're voting on is?
So, so what, what we're asking you tonight is, are you okay with the escrow account? And can Mr. Schulz move forward, working with them, to get this paperwork done? So then that'll be his direction with the paper.
Do you know what that fifteen percent number is?
No, I don't know if he knows. But we, what, where we would get it from is when they did, when they had to redo the portion of it. We, we would have entrances from the project, so our engineers would actually calculate it.
I agree.
I agree.
You want a motion, Mr.?
Yeah. I made a motion, or, yeah, I made a motion myself.
Your motion?
I made a motion to move forward with the paperwork including fees for the administration.
And what'll happen is, once, once he has the paperwork ready, you know, because they have to initiate part of that. And then once everything's set up and ready to go, they'll come back to council for a couple of days.
All right, a motion to the second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Um, so, Affordable Pet, once again, um, they, i- if you remember a while ago, they wanted to annex their Berwick property into the borough. Uh, so that if they do any other future projects, those projects are exclusively in the borough. They deal only with the borough, and then the borough gets the full credit for those. They did present to Berwick Monday night. So they were in front of Berwick's supervisors, um, and I'm not going, I, I guess they were okay with it because, um, their chair called and said, yeah, go ahead and talk to your council. Um, but here again, there's going to be some paperwork, there's going to be an intermunicipal resolution, uh, to get that done. Uh, Mr. Schulz, working for both municipalities again, uh, will have to get involved and engage for that. So, uh, Janie couldn't be here tonight, um, the owner, um, because she's out of town. So I told her I would present it for her. Basically, her property has three municipalities. It's the part where they're at now that's in the borough, there's a sliver that comes through that's Berwick, so it comes in like this. And then the top portion, like Erie, would be Hamilton Township. Now, in the future, we are going to talk to Hamilton about annexing that as well. Uh, and they did change laws a couple of years ago where it simplifies it, basically some paperwork between the two municipalities, and it's, it's a done thing.
None of these things are easy. It's true that, uh, the Smizers were at Berwick on, on Monday. Seems like it was a month ago, but it was just Monday. And the Berwick Board was generally okay with, with this idea. All of the property, uh, is taxed in Abbotstown, so Berwick received really nothing in this part. Abbotstown, that's it. But, and I, I don't know how well you can see this. This is where Affordable Pet is, yeah. And this is their property. As David said, it's in three municipalities, Abbotstown, Berwick, Hamilton. And, yeah, I was looking at that map and it doesn't really.
It doesn't do justice.
But the Berwick piece. In Abbotstown starts in this, this corner of this, um, triangle, and then goes out towards, uh, New York. It's a crazy situation. So, if, if Berwick annexed, if, Abbotstown annexes the Berwick piece for, for, um, Affordable Pet, it's going to leave this triangle here as a, like a forefront. That's, that's in Berwick, but owned by whoever owns this neighboring property. So, it might be that we do that piece. So. So, the point I'm trying to make is, this makes a lot of common sense, but it's never as easy as you would want it to. So.
I think you ought to look on it.
So, so what we're asking for tonight is not to approve the annex, of course, but we're asking for the authorization to work on it.
Motion by Hannah, second by Laura. Any further discussion?
Any questions? Is this? Well, that's probably not going to be till next year. We're, we're going to get this statement carried first, because that's, that's going to be a separate situation.
Great.
This is just going to be Berwick issue.
Is this in conjunction with, uh, Malala Bay is going to use that also property?
No. He's, he's not going over there now. The, the, the plot over there is a big enough for him.
Not big enough.
It's not big enough.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Um, next resolution, uh, for, uh, HR is, uh, to hire a new office assistant, basically assistant secretary treasurer. We landed on, uh, a candidate, uh, who has experience with logistics. Um, she did some warehousing, she, uh, did, uh, truck scheduling, uh, for Giant Foods. Very computer literate, organized. So I did get permission from the personnel, uh, to get her started. She did start yesterday. Um, today, I had Elijah come back and do some training with her, so that she understood how to do the website, things like that. So she's really hit the ground running. We can tell her office is really clean today because she, she did a really good job cleaning. So, uh, we hired her at, uh, fifteen dollars an hour for thirty hours a week, uh, not the same expanded hours as we had previously. But, there again, if she develops, you know, I, I explained to her that, um, increases are based on merit, not time. So, um, we'll introduce her to the different certifications, classes, make sure she's getting up to speed.
What's, um, what's protecting us from another life situation where, you know, train somebody?
We're a small borough, buddy, we're going to deal with that with our ass through time.
Just obviously losing a lot of time. His ass.
Right.
He does, that's what happened.
But that's, I mean, that's what happened, so, you know, he, he got through his work, you know, for, for school, and he had certifications and he wanted to go a certain direction. You know, he, he wants to be an HR specialist, he wants to go get a doctor, and, you know, be an HR lawyer. What, I have nothing to offer him here, you know, for HR. So, you know. But, but that's, that happens, I mean, police departments. You have kids come out of the academy and take any job anywhere, and then they're looking for the next place that's going to pay them. So, being a small borough, yeah, we're going to have that unless we find somebody that's going to lock in. I will tell you with Veronica, uh, like I said, she, she retired from that position. Um, you know, she'd work in another job until February, uh, part-time, uh, she's going to take partial, uh, retire me at that point. And then, you know, concentrate on this position. And she loves it because it's not a physical job. All of her jobs have been physical. So, so she. Yes, ma'am?
As long as, um, we work together, he works with us, and he's able to come back and help the new person, yeah, that's one good thing, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and, and we really appreciated that. He spent about three hours with her today, uh, going on her stuff, yep.
We're making this when we fire her.
Uh, Mayor had a question.
Are, are we going to be offering her the paid time off, the cake and, and, um, retirement package, like, who had the part-time authority?
So, the, um, the, the pension plan is for full-time, okay, so she's not going to be full-time. Okay, she'll be part-time. Okay, for the weekends, time off. But she would get time off benefits, she, like, if, if, if we get holiday, well, Phil's closed. What are you going to do? Not fair. It's paid holidays.
Part-time is free.
We have, you've.
I've never heard of that, ever.
You pay Elijah, when he's part-time.
Yeah, I had issues with that too, but.
But, I mean, what do we consider it, part-time, full-time, because I, I work.
Take that to thirty-two hours a week with part-time.
My company people are serving full-time, I think we're.
And that was the same discussion we had previous.
It's a personal piece, I think thirty hours a week is fine, but I'm not, I'm not making a motion, I couldn't, I'm just figuring that out right now. It's, I mean, if you're working thirty hours, that's a lot of time with the new guy.
Well, and, and, and the reason that we did that, the reason that we put their holidays in, was because prior to me working here, the office was only open three days.
Right.
So, so you didn't have your Monday holidays. You didn't have your, you know, your, you didn't get off good Friday. You know, so, they always paid for election days because you shut the office down.
I mean, it's what defines them today.
Does it cost us anymore because it's always budgeted?
I don't know, I just.
All right. A motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Who had, who made the motion?
Laura made it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
If you get the opportunity, stop in, say hi to her, you know. She was going to come tonight and introduce herself, but she hadn't. Um, so, red work in the borough, um, we just finalized, uh, the deal with Yorkwater and Columbia Gas. So, what's going to happen? Columbia Gas is going to come through, they're going to fix their sides that they did, they're going to fix two lanes. They're gonna fix two lanes in some areas like we talked about. And then we are supplementing the money you've approved to get the rest of it done. The part that was under discussion was, um, West Fleet Street, what we were gonna do there. If we were gonna widen it, it was going to take base work. And that substantially increased the amount of the cost. So what was proposed was that they would take care of the part they're supposed to take care of. And then on our side, it would get an overlay which would strengthen what's currently there. Um, I bounced it off the, uh, engineers. Engineers are fine with that. Um, it's, in their words, it's going to be a lot better than what's there now. So, um, those are the repairs you've already approved. So nothing has changed. If we were gonna do the base repair, it was gonna increase the cost. But the engineers don't see need for that. So we are ready to move forward. I signed the paperwork for them, so they're scheduling. Hopefully next month. We'll see new roads. Park trails and, uh, pavilion rentals are now open. I wanna make that public. I'm gonna be sending out a savvy citizen about that. Um, the park, if you're a resident, fifty dollars to rent, a hundred dollar security deposit. If you're a non-resident, a hundred dollars. We've got the upgraded electricity. We've got the outlets there, so probably the Prox talks and stuff. Bathrooms, of course, we upgraded those last year. So we've got the baby tables in both. We've got the non-slip flooring down on the concrete when it gets wet. Um, and then we put the new, uh, towel dispensers in last year, the automatic towel dispensers. So, um, that's ready to go. We've already had three rentals this year. And, um, volleyball courts open. I still have to get another container for the ball, football in. That one got knocked off. We are gonna work on, uh, the area down there where the, um, stands are. So I've started going back and cutting in some of that high stuff. Um, and then we're gonna get some seating situations taken care of there. Um, ARPA, um, saves fund, the, the money that we got over COVID. Every year we had put in a report, put in a report, put in a report. This year I put in our final closeout report. Everything's done. We've used the money, reported what we used it for. They do a single audit, they send it back to me and say, okay. And then we're done. And most of those funds ended up being used for matching funds for different projects. Or of course, um, hiring the, the assistant position. Um, website, uh, so Austin had asked about, uh, putting, uh, Ecode three sixty last month on the website. So we ran into a little difficulty getting it on the front page. We don't have the access for that, so we had to put in a request to the county. Uh, so the county IT will put that on the front page for us, um, down by the documents area. Currently, now, I'm not talking about individual ordinances. I'm talking about codified ordinances. So that's on Ecode three sixty. If you go down to the document page on the front page, click on that. To your left side, you'll see it says Buracoats. Click on that, takes you right to three sixty. Once we have the county upload it, it'll be a few less clicks and it'll be right on the front page. And then I just wanna point out, um, that we had the e-cycling event, uh, year this past month, uh, at our facility. I think it went really well. Chief was here for that. No issues. So, um, now I will tell you that just the other day, Stravan reached out and said that they are interested in doing the next round of bidding for us cause our contracts are coming up. And I know April was asking about that. So we are going to start having meetings actually at the end of this month to start talking about our current agreements, what we like, what we don't, what we want added. So if there's anybody with any input on that, get it over to me. But I'm, I am looking to retain the, um, recycling program. Cause I think that's important. And the e-cycling program. Cause we get a lot of use out of that. But if there's anything else anybody's interested in, and the ideas, get back to me and I'll take it to the meeting. Yes.
Before I did embark on my new life, um, they, uh, I got a phone call. They said, why did you, why did you stop the, um, spring team up there?
The spring team.
I think I called it junk.
Oh, like the large item.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so the reason they stopped doing that is because they would have to send extra trucks out. Because they, you can't pick up the regular stuff and the, and the big stuff. This is what is explained to me. So now the way they handle that is if you have a large item pickup, you just call and get it scheduled. And let them know, and then they know, you know, if I've only got three chairs to pick up, I don't need seven extra trucks out.
Well, neither spent like three trucks when they had the, had the contract here.
Right. And that's why, that's why, because they were running out of drivers and, you know. So, yeah, they, they kinda streamlined it into the regular pickups. I mean, if you're interested, I can ask about it.
No, that's, I, I just, I'll call her back and let her know that that's why we did that.
Yeah. If she has a large item pickup, she can just call, let them know, hey, I've got this pickup. And they'll tell you what day to put it out. April said she, she. Um, and, and while we're on that, I just, I wanna say thanks to these other municipalities. Because I will tell you this, when I got here eight years ago, nobody worked with Abbottstown. Like I was calling around and I heard nothing. But no, we're not working. And the first thing was we, we got with Cumberland, Stravan, East Berlin. We started doing the, the garbage contracts. You know, of course, when I started working at North York, now we've got, you know, programs so that I can get e-cycling over there in between events. And then, um, of course in Oxford, we worked well with their, uh, government over there. And, and then of course Berwick. You know, our founder didn't wanna be buried in Berwick. And for two hundred and fifty years, nobody got along between Abbottstown and Berwick. And so we fostered a good relationship with them. Now we're moving forward with a lot of positive projects with them. And it's just good, you know? And hopefully in the future, we'll have some other municipalities hopefully. We may want to also come into that forum and, and work with some of these things. So hopefully we'll, we'll see that, um, as things progress.
So what are you doing? So I wanna see.
Oh, hold on, Hannah was talking, sorry.
I'd like to see something for a solution with cardboard. Because I've gone back and forth with our trash company about cardboard. Sometimes they put that up, sometimes they weren't. We have unlimited recycling, but your cardboard has to be two by two and it's gotta be strapped up and all these things. And I'm like, so why can't I just put it all into one box? If it's recycling, what's the difference of a box and versus a toilet? I wanna see a good solution for cardboard. Because people are using Amazon and getting boxes delivered. We're not going to stores anymore.
Yes.
I wanna see a good, easy solution for that. Cause I live on thirty, so if they do my trap, if they do the cans wrong and cardboard everywhere. And I know it's not just a meat problem. So I would love to see somebody who has goods, who has the cardboard. Yeah. If one of their grain cans solves all your issues. I have one. That's where you put it.
You mean the toter?
But I, I fill up ours every two weeks. So I.
Well, I mean, two weeks is, it is a long time.
It is two weeks.
Yes.
Yes. And I, so we have a full recycling and then I have cardboard. Yeah. And, and I'm, yeah.
So, so would it, would it help if we had recycling every week? With, with the current toter situation that you have?
Yeah. I think either recycling every week or just like this cardboard off.
This way I can at least offer them something and be like, look, here's the concern. Here's what we're thinking.
Oh, and I, I'm not paying an extra fifty dollars a quarter to figure this problem out either. If somebody had a like, okay, that's awesome for cardboard. Because I think that's what a lot of people are second.
It's kind of hard to understand why they won't take it when it's in a box.
Yeah, a box in a box. You would think that's perfect. It's consolidated.
We've had real. We do the, say the two by two thing, around duct tape around it and though beside the container. And they've, they've. Taken it every time.
Yeah, I'm not, but I'm not going for duct tape to duct tape on the box. I'm going, I'm going, when I can just, I could just pull them in the box and stuff. Also not cutting it down to two or three.
So, so, so what I have, because if I ask for more pickups, it's gonna be. And, and, and quite honestly, we just did contracts last year in York. All prices go up.
And that I understand.
Like all prices are going up. But, but I will ask them about just putting boxes in boxes. I mean, that seems very common sense.
As long as it's not bigger than the, the actual tote, what are they gonna have?
All right. I will present that.
You got it set up and you got it.
And I think that's everything. Thank you.
You skipped, uh, tire pit part.
Oh, gee, weird. Yes. Okay. So meant, my bad. Seriously. Um, so, uh, there were a discussion on the amendments for fire pits. And I didn't put this as a, a motion yet because basically we're looking for direction as to what types of change, if any, council wants to consider and present some of the other options. Some of the things that came up, of course, like currently we can have the, um, the, the small pits, you know, the, the portable pits. You have chimney is because, you know, you can pick them up and move them. Um, but right now our ordinances do not allow for like in-ground pits or, you know, pits that are stacked up from the ground, you know, things like that. So, uh, Chief and I have talked about it. There may be some options. I'm gonna kinda let in through some of that yet. And, and, you know, it, it's basically this council would want to make a change and it knew how much the ordinance.
So I want you for the in-ground pits, the above-ground pits. Basically look at solid concrete block. Several blocks high, nothing bigger than four feet by four feet. The screen issue, you still have to have a screen over it. Same type. Native wood. If you have the cardboard in it, I'm gonna get your insurance.
And, and, and basically what we're doing is, is we're trying to look for direction on the amendments as a whole, not just one or the other. Chief had given you an amendment, uh, idea last meeting when you, when the Madisoners. And, you know, so instead of just moving forward with one thing, if we can get a couple of things you guys are looking for, it's gonna cut down the cost to produce those amendments.
My thoughts were we could define what a bonfire is. And my thoughts would be five by five by five. I mean, as far as it would be five feet with height. I would say if you're a lone bear, you're five feet. Cause we say no bonfires, but we don't define no bonfire. And I think that means.
It is defined by what's in it. It has to be contained in a fire pit, according to what the chimney may. So if it's outside of that, which is on.
Yeah, but if we allow it on that, I think we should. When people are building them, I think it's a sizable problem. It's resourceful, I feel. Well, I mean, humans, this means this is, you know, not profitable. That was, I was gonna thought of your sign before.
So you're saying you put it into a burning situation? So that that can be verified? You said about permanent.
No, permanent.
Oh, permanent. Okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You put a square footage on it? That way someone could circle?
Yeah, well, it's a, it's a.
If it's four by four, it's at sixteen square feet.
Maybe your surface should be four feet in diameter.
Okay. Which is why I asked, so.
And then you have to figure out how high you want it. Cause you, you're gonna have to have something that can contain it.
Right.
Typically what would be on the minimum? What would be on minimum and what would be like a maximum?
Max for you.
Well, you do a hand on it, it's only a brick high, well, an eight inch brick. It doesn't gotta contain anything. Which is why he said like, you can sit with block high and stuff like that, you know?
I mean, generally you're gonna want something high enough that an animal or a small dog's not gonna just walk. So like thirty inches. Four, I think you said four blocks high or something. Something like that.
Can we do a fire apartment? What would you run?
Yeah, probably something in that twenty-four, thirty inch high. And the thing we have to be strict on though is you are burning wood in there. Not pressure-treated wood. Not cardboard, not garbage, not diapers, not tires. You're burning wood.
So the, so, so the reason you reciprocate your ordinance in state law is so that you can enforce it through code and not through lease or BBA. So that's like with the fireworks? Like the fireworks mimic the state. Well, why do you need an ordinance if the state has a law? Well, then code enforcement can do it and you don't have to give it to the police.
Cause if you go, things on pressure-treated wood, it's like, and we get ten thousand dollars fine, right? Something like that.
If you're burning anything that's commercial.
Right. But like pressure-treated wood.
Pressure-treated wood, you know, and then there's a duty for violation.
But you're saying you can do it like on a local level instead of jumping right to a state level?
If you have movies.
Okay. I was trying to understand. That's all.
If there's no ordinance in place locally, then you start looking at your toolbox. What addresses? Well, county buzz and state buzz. So then instead of code enforcement, you have a police department.
And honestly, it's, it's, it's better for everybody if code deals with it. So that you keep the police out. With code, it's, hey, this is wrong. You get a warning, you get another notice. Okay, now you can find, you know, with police, it's direct enforcement. So that's why we try to mimic ordinances to those.
I can't believe this. Twenty-four inch high, cause that makes sense. Kid running around, stuff like that. Oh, I believe it. I believe it. The size and that's, I'm pretty, four feet by four feet is a good size. Five feet by five feet is probably max that I would have said for a permanent pit. And cause it has like a five by five and I don't know what size log can't plus and add to that. Yeah, correct. And, uh, and that's that benefit. So I don't care with either of those sizes. Like I'm gonna pay off the five by five, but that's up there. Everybody else would kinda disagree on stuff like that. That wouldn't be a big deal now.
So, you know, with the mesh, you said a screen. A screen. Look, screen, is there a minimal tightness to that? Like, you know, you can't toss like chicken wire over that at that point.
No, it's not. Cause I'm doing the whole thing, yeah.
Correct.
Which is the point of it.
Correct.
So you're gonna have all ashes coming to the neighbors, you're gonna have to work the yard.
Correct.
And then now.
I'm just looking at.
Once you get, unless you get into accepting pits like that, then it's still gonna have to be problems. So like the ground and, I don't think that's gonna work.
Right, no.
Burn down, burn down.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
And if you do want to transition, this is a screen to define what that mesh would be as far as. And if you do like the translation, just with a screen to define what that mesh would be, as far as tightness, maybe should people try to find a loophole in that? If I can think of it right here on the spot, it's my ass.
At least a three-eighths.
Right? I don't know what that screen is.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, okay. That's it. That's about three. I got you.
Three-eighths.
So, basically what we're looking for with this, is you've given us the direction. Now what we can do is put a proposal together, bring it back, like I said, you know, we'll bring a couple of things back. So this and the, the data centers.
I just heard, you know, you were saying you're looking at a data center again, so those things are coming through our hearing.
He said state law says that we have to have.
You have to allow it, if it's a, if it's a legal use.
Yeah, sure.
Limited use in the state, it's a legal use, you have to allow it somewhere.
Okay. We forgot, what were the kind of, a lot that land, you said? I know we discussed it, like, look, we should weather.
Well, you just put a new, so you say, it would be in this, in the commercial industrial.
Okay.
So then it would only be in the areas that were written.
So you're gonna put that on the calendar next month, so you can.
So what we'll do, what we'll do is we'll, we'll put a proposal together for an amendment, uh, for this and for those centers. And then we'll bring it back next month. And then if you decide you like the proposal, you can vote to advertise it, and in the following month you can vote. Is it, is that where we're at, though? This is where we're at, if you come back next month and say, well, what about this, what about this, it's gonna push it off.
You're talking about the data center?
No, well, I'm saying anything. Mostly, yeah, right.
Cause I think the data center is a little bit more, uh, of every depth, it's not just defining, it's providing criteria, I think, where is it gonna go? Because data center zoning ordinance amendments are a couple pages, you know? So it's not just a, like, definition. Well, I'm, I'm doing a couple of, of the missed hours, so, you know, you're looking for everything. Looking at your zoning map, I'm, I'm not sure.
So I would be willing on that.
What do you got, April?
Um, fire pits, for me, is a no, um, I suppose they're mostly house and town. I mean.
Well, we're talking, they're, they're talking about five-foot max, and, and then build it up so you can't install it.
Okay, that's my opinion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So what do we have to do then, to get this going?
So we're gonna, what we're gonna do is we're gonna start working on these things. And then we'll, I think, next month, if we have something, then we'll present it. So, you know, if we're not ready with the data centers yet, we'll bring this with. If the data centers are ready, we'll put it into the same advertising. If it's not ready till the following month, we're just separately advertising.
Well, people need to push on it because it's coming up.
Right.
It's not put it back in.
The data center will, will take three months, and then it'll.
That's just what I'm saying, but not now.
Right, right.
So then you're over there with broken map, and you'll work on this one, and then when we have something together, we'll send it to you.
And then we'll, yeah, we'll have something on the pits next month. That shouldn't, that shouldn't take that long. Okay? No, I don't know.
Are you sure?
I hope so. Geez, I'm tired of hearing you say.
Dan, we're up next.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so the first item is the police agreement and resolution for the township. Um, as council knows, Burwick approached Abbotstown, um, requesting Abbotstown to provide limited police services to Burwick. Um, and when I say limited, it is limited to pretty much, uh, vehicle code enforcement and board. So, so we worked on an intramunicipal agreement, it is now, uh, ready for action. But the basics of the intramunicipal agreement are that, subject to the department, to Abbotstown's requirements. Um, they will detail officers to Burwick at Burwick's request. And, and then that's gonna happen, is gonna be arranged between a representative of the board supervisors in Burwick, the police chief, and the mayor. So all of that scheduling will happen when we come out of the way. Um, Burwick will then pay Abbotstown sixty-five dollars an hour for those services. Um, and that would include not only the time of the detail, but also court time, travel time, uh, that the police are gonna be required to do. If they cite someone to go, um, if there are any fines levying, Burwick will put them. Again, it's limited in Burwick to vehicle code enforcement types of things, and any criminal violations that are discovered in the course of vehicle code enforcement. So, um, the initial term of the agreement, it is a very short term, so it's from June first of this year to the end of the year, December thirty-first coming from here. Uh, it is then subject to automatic renewals, um, unless either party wants to get out, and it's a sixty-day, uh, request to get out. But what will happen annually is if it automatically renews, will be left at the amount of, so it's probably sixty-five dollars. Uh, Burwick will also pay for the, um, the, the requirement for Burwick to be listed on your police liability insurance. Is, is a matter that your insurance company charges with fees, five hundred dollars, Burwick pays that. But then Burwick will be listed as an additional insured under this agreement, so that if anything happens in Burwick Township, they're going to at least have a burden, Burwick is covered. Pretty, pretty much the agreement, at least chief, you have more to add.
Originally, this was just for, to help, you know, put up a speed monitor, uh, the Kenan and Rip race track, right?
Primarily, that's what they're looking for.
Are we actually trolling Burwick, or over there at all, or kind of an agreement that's never been efficient, so, as far as?
So, yeah, the way I understand it is, um, Burwick will have a liaison, we, we will probably be their chair to start. Um, and then, just like, uh, you know, other municipalities put people in police commissions, they'll choose somebody to interact with chief. And then what they'll do is they'll put their requests, say, you know, we want you this Friday for four hours here, we want you for Saturday here. Um, and then they'll basically, you know, we'll invoice them for that company.
Okay.
So, so, yeah, eh, eh, is he gonna be over there just sitting around? Probably not. They, most of it's gonna be for the racetrack, I would imagine, but I can tell you, I've received phone calls from people in Burwick along the third. And they're like, when's somebody gonna troll us? And I'm like, man, like, well, you're Abbotstown, I live in Abbotstown, no, you don't live in Abbotstown. It's one of those calls. Um, but, but then I directed her to Burwick and said, look, they're considering getting police coverage, so let them know you want coverage there.
With the state, not cover them at all?
I, I mean, sometimes they do, but you, what you gotta realize is state is, is as shorthanded as everybody else. We do get good cooperation out of them, but, you know, we've only got so many officers on, where are you gonna put them? You know, the other side of that is, we have a department, um, Northern Regional is in Paradise Township, so we see them in this area. So, you know, we do have police coverage, but in the off times, yes, we, we do rely on them to come out as well, anyhow.
Won't you even go there, you're happy with this?
We can work with it.
Are you excited about it? Do you wanna do it?
Well, patrolling and enforcement, you know, whether it's on this side of the street or that side of the street, it's the same. I, I think people in Burwick, as far as complaints on Racetrack Road, Kenan, I'm sure they are one of them, between Cross Pews and, uh, the complaints have come in for years. And we see it, we see it up in the street. So if we can make it different, and maybe improve the quality of life for people that are on Racetrack there in Kenan, really, like, I think that's a good thing.
So, so years ago, we had a joint police department team. And for whatever reason, that fell through the side, or whatever, um, with this situation, we already get grants. Uh, the, the, the chief applies for, for traffic enforcement, so we already benefit from that, through, through that. Um, working with Burwick, you know, that's gonna bring in revenue for us as well, which decreases our costs overall to have our own department. So, you know, whereas, you know, he might be budgeted fifty thousand a year, and he's only using thirty-five of it. Now those are, those costs are gonna be defrayed by the one that we're gonna have as well, and we're still gonna have the same coverage here. So, it, it's a net advantage for us, it's an advantage for Burwick because they don't have to go to the regional where they have to have a contract for so many units, which is gonna cost so many hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, they, they can pick a budget and tell us what they wanna do with it.
I know.
Thank you, well, well, there's two, there's two, yeah, there's two action items on this. One is, uh, a motion to approve, or adopt Resolution twenty-two-five dash six.
Six, thank you.
Which is the resolution authorizing, uh, council to entering to an intramunicipal.
Okay, so I can not.
All right, the motion, the second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, and opposed, motion carries.
The second motion is a motion to approve the intramunicipal.
Motion, second.
Motion by Hannah, second by Laura, any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye, and opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Um, all right, so the next is, uh, David asked me to leave counsel brief. Um, um, and the case, it's, it's actually pending in the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania, um, so it is Pullman versus Parkin School District. This, the case involves, uh, the, uh, the amendments to the essential number. So, back in two thousand and twenty-one, the General Assembly amended the central half, and began to require municipalities to do a lot more in terms of publicizing the agenda, so that the public knows what their council's gonna do, and their actions there. So that the public is, is more informed and, and be more active in that process. So, as part of that, um, the townships are now required to post twenty-four hours in the business, um, the agenda, which lists all of the action orders that a council would consider taking at that meeting. And it has to be posted on the website, it has to be posted physically, and, and copies of the agenda have to be made public to, or made available to those who comes in the news. So, a- as you may imagine, that really changed the way municipalities do business, because before it was like, you would do the agenda of that morning, and it changed a lot between the morning of, and, and sometimes it would get changed during the meeting. So, Act sixty-five pretty much said you can't do that anymore. They proposed an event, and provided four limited exceptions as to how you can amend or add things to the agenda. So, and, and they're limited, so one was for emergency business, and it really had to be emergency, it didn't be some made-up emergency. So that to impact, you know, the security of the borough. Uh, the second is legitimate business that arose twenty-four hours before the meeting. And again, it has to arise twenty-four hours before the meeting. Um, and then there's business that arises during the meeting, so oftentimes, you have, uh, members of the public come, and they want you to do certain things, right? But it's not on the agenda, so that allows council to change the agenda. Um, and then finally, there was this catch-all, like, if council really wanted to change the agenda. So, shortly after, uh, Act sixty-five, uh, there was a situation in the Parkin School District where the school district did not list the collective bargaining agreements that it needed to go on the agenda, they got to the meeting, they added it to the agenda, they voted, and they approved the collective bargaining agreement. So residents sued, um, a lawsuit, challenging that changing the agenda. The common, the, the lower court in the Commonwealth Court ruled that the school district could not change the agenda. It only was limited to the three exceptions, that is, the exception for emergencies, business that arose twenty-four hours, within twenty-four hours, uh, for business that arose during the meeting. So, they, they relied on the change in the agenda exception. And the Commonwealth Court said, you can't do that, that's not how it's written, um, you're violating the law. So, the case has been appealed to the Pennsylvania Superior, so it's currently pending there. Um, but, and oral arguments have been made, but there's been no decision yet. So, how it affects us is that it really limits councils' ability to change the agenda once it's posted. It has to fit into those three exceptions, and as to the two exceptions, you can't take action that's gonna spend the money. So, you can add something to the agenda if something arises within twenty-four hours of the meeting, but it has to be de minimis in nature, and it doesn't take for some. So, long and short of it is, whatever we post, that's what we're doing now. Now, that doesn't mean you can't then have a special meeting to deal with things that, that come up between meetings, but you have to run five of those. That's it.
So with that, um, I'm done.
Okay.
Uh, nothing, engineers.
The engineers, like I said, uh, were working on, uh, the, uh, situation with Kensington, so I do thank them for their input.
Dan, management report?
Um, nothing wrong on the management report, I don't know if I could read this in my office, or I can read it in.
For the good of the word.
Okay.
Forza?
Okay, uh, code enforcement, we've had two meetings now, two workshops, working on outside storage amendments. Not a lot of people have attended the meetings, but those we have.